Oh, I was gonna give you one.
Yes.
No, we didn't do one.
I'm looking around, I'm like, okay, Mrs. B.
This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 3rd, 2018, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall 221 South 5th Avenue on January 3rd, 2018, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. If you come up to speak, please speak into the microphones. And assistive listening devices are available. Mr. Leslie, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Brill Middler?
Here.
Councilwoman Fine?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Here.
Councilwoman Hirsch?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Here.
Councilwoman Wolkovich?
Yes.
Or attorney?
Here.
Or administrator?
Here.
Okay. Do we have anyone here tonight from the Million Moms March Brady Bill? Okay, I just wanted to let everyone know that we are filing a proclamation about Gun Violence Awareness Day, which is June 1st, and that is the day we're asking everyone to wear orange in memory of all the people we've lost due to gun violence here in this country. So, thank you to the folks at Million Moms March and the Brady Bill. Karen.
Cantor.
Cantor.
Cantor, thank you. Karen Cantor is, has been a wonderful advocate for gun safety, and we thank her very much. May I have a motion to approve the regular and conference meetings held January 16th, 2018, as distributed?
So moved.
Second. Roll call? All in favor?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, council reports. I'd like to start on my left with Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to report on our last month finding from our police blotter, and it says follows: In total, last month, we had 104 calls that was made to our police department. We had four motor vehicle calls that were called in. We had 38 ambulance call, four assault, one disorderly person, six dispute calls, 11 fire calls were made, harassments were eight, missing persons was two, and motor vehicle incident is 22. Shoplifting was one, theft was two, and trespassing was two, and warrant for arrest was four. So where we see the most calls that has been made to our police department, it's for ambulance services. And so that gives us a total of 104 calls that was made. This will be made available for anyone who wishes to see the report that was made. With that said, speaking of police department, this week, we pause for Police Memorial Week, and it's called Peace Week. So this week is Peace Week that was signed into law by President JFK for Peace Week to remember the officers that died in the line of service who gave their life serving our communities around the US, and he signed this into law in 1961. And we just pause to remember all of those people that were out there who serve and protect our lives daily. Today in Washington, there was a big celebration and a big announcement that was done, and officers who traveled from around the country were there to be acknowledged for their services. Their families were there to be acknowledged, you know, for the life that their family gave in serving and protecting our community. And I would like to say kudos to our police department that continues to serve and protect and keep us safe in our homes and in our whereabouts. With that said, I also, on a sad note, or a sadder note, or I guess it's both sad and it's both good at the same time, there is, there was a lady by the name of Henrietta Lox. And Henrietta was an African-American woman. She was 31 years old when she died in 1951, and her body was used to afford research of cancer without permission from her family or anyone else. And her body was taken and was used to do research because she died of cancer at the age of 31. And the research that her body produced was able to find a lot of the cures for cancer, AIDS, gene mapping, cloning, and much, much, much more. And after all this time, she was finally acknowledged today. There's a portrait of her hanging in Washington, and there's a portrait of her hanging in the African-American museum. And for someone who gave so much to the country and globally, it's not just here in the US that benefited from the cancer research that was done in her body, her family was never acknowledged, neither was she acknowledged, but today was the day that they finally did an acknowledgement of Henrietta. And I am really happy tonight that this was done. And if, and when you go to the African-American Museum in Washington, please stop by and, you know, give her thanks for her service because she's, years after her death, she continues to bring new life into this world. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Fine, do you have a report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I will begin my report tonight unfortunately on a sad note. Susan Roth, formerly Highland Park's children's librarian and library director, and then Library Board of Trustees member for over 25 years, sadly passed away on Sunday, May 13th. Her service to the library in the borough will always be treasured. The Highland Park Library will be closed in Susan Roth's honor this coming Sunday, May 20th, when a celebration of life ceremony for her will be held, and so we wish condolences to her family. The next Library Board of Trustees meeting will be held at 7:30 PM this coming Monday, May 21st, at the library. In regard to property taxes, on May 4th, Governor Murphy signed legislation into law that would allow but not require New Jersey municipalities to set up charitable funds to which residents may pay their property taxes. In regard to this law, regulations will be issued out of Trenton by July 3rd. The Finance Standing Committee, which I chair, will continue to explore the possibility of setting up a charitable fund as provided for by the law so that Highland Park residents may take more deductions for their property taxes than what would currently be allowed under the new federal tax law. Finally, I just want to thank Governor Murphy for commemorating the 70th anniversary of the establishment of the State of Israel when he signed a resolution yesterday to recognize the historic significance of the occasion as well as the social, cultural, and economic ties between New Jersey and Israel. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, do you have a report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The Recreation Department, we are still registering for summer camps. Join the fun. Day camp, sports camps, and theater camp. Choose one week or six. Sports camps include baseball, or softball, basketball, soccer, football, or wrestling, tennis, or volleyball, which is new this year. Summer basketball for middle or high schoolers, boys and girls teams, Tuesdays and Thursdays. Pickup games, plus games with other towns. And this program is free, but you must register. The Memorial Day Parade will take place Monday, May 28th, and it begins in New Brunswick at 11:00 AM. Sports equipment exchange. Do you have sports equipment that is no longer being used? Have your children outgrown their cleats? Share them with your neighbors with this great community-wide recycling program. Sports equipment exchange will take place on May 28th at the Luke Oil Parking Lot after the Memorial Day Parade. The Independence Day fireworks, Monday, July 2nd, and rain date July 3rd. Join your friends and neighbors for live entertainment, delicious food, and fireworks in Donaldson Park. The event begins at 5:00 PM with children's music, "Mr. Ray." Then see the Highland Park Youth Theater Company perform a musical with the singing and dancing numbers from popular musical theater shows. There will be activities for all, from face painting to dance, soccer, martial arts, and more. The evening continues with local musician groups. The fireworks will go off at 9:20 PM. This is a fun event for the entire community. Unfortunately, the Rec advisory Committee idea of having a sprinkler fest area during the day of the 4th of July fireworks will not happen this year. We reached out to our friends at Middlesex County for assistance with the water connection and setting up the park for the sprinkler fest, and due to Donaldson Park's poor drainage, it's really impossible. Actually, Council President George said it probably is a swamp right now after this heavy rain there.
Well, just to clarify, we've had that discussion before at length when we were trying to put the sculpture project there, if you recall, and we learned that it's about a foot above the river, and unfortunately, when it rains, a lot of its bowl-shaped in the water does sit there, but the information you got was correct.
Yeah, so the Recreation Advisory Committee will go back to the drawing board at the next meeting, and hopefully, we can find a new location. The Historic Commission, we have over 30 people registered for the May walking tour and over 20 for June's date. The Commission was actually supposed to set up the display case tonight in Borough Hall, but due to the heavy rain, we didn't want to bring out these items. The display will match the theme of the walking tours, which is life along Main Street in Highland Park. Also, the Historic Commission will have a table set up at the Middlesex County History Fair at East Jersey Old Town on May 20th. The Arts Commission, they have a comic book drawing workshop this Saturday at the Fallout Shelter. Registration is full, but you can still come and observe in the standing room only. Open Studios, we have a low registration, so we may have to move it into the fall. A lot of folks just had vacation plans around June and July. The meeting regarding the Band-Aid, bench artist Lucky Joe went well. We're looking forward to the exact location. We may move it somewhere else in town, in details to follow. We're planning a follow-up on the Fluxus Panel for the end of June, and plans are in the works for another chalk art night for National Night Out. And last, for Arts Commission, plans are in the works for Music on the Corner for the summer. The corner would be at North 4th and Raritan, and thank you Pino's for allowing, for providing the electricity. Music runs approximately from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And as I mentioned last meeting, May is Asian American Pacific Islanders Month. This Sunday, May 20th, 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM, the Asian American Festival will take place at the New Jersey Convention and Expo Center, 97 Sunfield Avenue in Edison. The festival brings together the diverse Asian American community under one roof to celebrate the Asian American Heritage Month. Entertainment, dance, performances, food, shopping, and children's activity. And last but not least, Ramadan Mubarak to those that will be celebrating tomorrow. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wolkovich, do you have a report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On Saturday, May 5th, several council members, Councilwoman Foster Dublin, Council President George, Councilwoman Hirsch, and I, joined the family and friends of our late Councilman, John Erickson. We met at Raritan in South Adelaide to dedicate a new bus stop in his memory. Always an advocate for the working man, John was a well-respected professor, academic, and mentor, and guided the governing body in best practices. Thank you to John's wife, Ann Sherber, daughter Tess, and family members who funded the project and attended this small moving ceremony to honor John and his important work for our community. It was my pleasure to serve with John on council. Thanks to members from Main Street, Jim Nichols for drawing up the design, Rebecca Hirsch, Siobhan Weinstein, Ally Hack, also Stacy Kaplan from Communications, Scott Brecher from our co-director, and Mike Wazorkowitz from Public Works for managing the installation. The weather held out for us on Sunday, May 6th for our biggest events, Highland Park's 5K and Street Fair. Our 10th Annual 5K was a smashing success. Winners received T-shirts with a new commemorative logo, and winners received a mug which they could then fill at OQ and Pino's for special discount pricing. And our Street Fair was the biggest yet, thanks to all our sponsors, vendors, and all of the volunteers and staff that make these events a success year in and year out. Special thanks to the Director of Main Street, Rebecca Hirsch, to our police department, fire department, first aid squads. I'd like to update you on one of my favorite topics, grants for improved and safer pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. WSP, the planning firm that was assigned to us by the New Jersey Department of Transportation to create an improved bike walk plan for Highland Park, had a booth at our Street Fair. Susan Blickstein, one-time resident who worked on our master plan years ago, will be working with WSP on our bike walk plan. She was there with a map and asking people about their traffic experiences. We will post a link to their survey, we'll post that link to our website, and put it in our e-newsletter. Please provide your input. The link is surveymonkey.com/r/hparkcs, but again, we'll post it in those locations. An update on the Safe Routes to School Grant, where we received nearly a quarter million dollars to improve walkability in and around the neighborhoods of Irving and Bartle Schools. Members of the New Jersey Department of Transportation met here in Highland Park with our Borough Administrator Terry Hovair, Borough Engineer Bruce Koch, members of our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee team, and me, for a kickoff meeting last week. As the original source for these funds is federal funding, we received the numerous steps, we reviewed the numerous steps and requirements which we'll have to follow, which Terry will have to follow, thank you in advance, including public outreach to the neighborhoods. Afterwards, I walked our guests up Mansfield Street right around the corner to assess the intersections at South 5th and at Grove and discuss when improvements can be made there. After all assessments, reporting certificates, et cetera, submitted, we expect federal authorizations of funds next summer and work to begin immediately following. May is truly the busiest month, and we have even more to offer you. To celebrate May as National Safe Bicycling Month, Keep Middlesex Moving and members of our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee have organized a Bike to School for our middle school on May 25th from Donaldson Park to the middle school. Our younger students at Bartle can participate in our annual Walk Your Child to School Day. Parents, guardians, and students should meet at the Stop and Shop parking lot at 7:40 AM tomorrow morning, Wednesday, May 16th. Main Street's Downtown Planting Days are this Thursday, May 17, and Saturday, May 19. Join the volunteers to help beautify our downtown by filling our planters with flowers and decorative plants. Our outdoor movie theater runs from May through September on Saturday nights, beginning on May 26th with The Secret of Nim. I understand Over the Moon Toys will be donating crayons and markers for kids to decorate cardboard boxes into cars, creating a drive-in movie. Please bring your own box. June 9th, we plan to show Brazil. This film is sponsored by Councilman George. Thank you.
I always pick the oddballs to sponsor.
It's one of my favorite movies.
Absolutely.
Thanks to Brian Onkin for a great lineup of movies. Vintage cartoons shown at dusk, main features are at 9:00 PM at the municipal parking lot on Raritan between 2nd and 3rd. Beginning June 1st, Music on the Corners runs through September on Friday nights, and thanks to Main Street for booking every single Friday from June through September. Our weekly farmer's market, named one of the best in the state, begins Friday, June 1, and runs until December. And finally, please note that we have some schedule changes with the summer season. Main Street Board continues to meet the 3rd Wednesday of the month at 6:00 PM at the Senior Center. Our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee meets next Wednesday, May 23rd at 7:00 at the Senior Center, and then the 3rd Wednesdays of the month thereafter. Planning Board meets Tuesday, May 22, here at Borough Hall at 7:30. They will be reviewing ANT Realty, which is the property on Raritan and North 2nd. The following Planning Board meeting will be Thursday, June 21st, at which they will be reviewing a subdivision on South 5th and Mansfield. Zoning Board meets on Monday, May 21st, and then continues to meet the 4th Monday of the month unless otherwise noticed. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Hirsch, do you have a report?
I do, Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to address an issue that has occupied several of my boards and commissions for the last few months, and specifically, address a letter that was submitted to Mayor and Council regarding an incident that happened in the borough back in March. You know, for nearly two months, the council's been having an important discussion related to race and racial bias in our community, and for a town that tackles so many social justice issues, we clearly, as a community, have had a difficult time talking about race in either an academic or in a practical way. We've also had a difficult time looking at a complicated issue without partiality and equipped with limited facts and presented with incomplete data. I'm confident that as we continue to address this issue, that the council will examine our municipal and policing practices carefully and deliberately. That's our charge. I want to challenge our activated, organized residents to work with the council when developing and promoting these policies, just like we did with our Inclusive Communities Resolution last year. I'm heartened that this letter was signed by so many friends, neighbors, and volunteers who have committed countless hours to make Highland Park a more equitable place, but without holding hands to move bravely forward, we all risk working in silos and potentially working against each other's interests. This would be particularly catastrophic when I'm pretty sure everybody, the council, the police, and the residents who signed this letter, and the residents who didn't, want a better, more equitable Highland Park. This was not the case with our immigration discussion, where we had a considerable number of residents speaking out against our proposed policies. While many people rolled their eyes March 20th, when several of us said that we need to help addressing racial, that we need their help, the community's help, in addressing racial bias in our community, the fact remains, we need your help. Impact organizing is multifaceted. Stepping up to the mic is valuable and often necessary facet, but working together is often the more sustainable route. Also, I can definitely say that most other towns don't have even remotely our open-door policy for resident engagement. I attend a lot of municipal meetings in other towns, so that is an absolute fact. This is how we do our business in Highland Park, and I wouldn't have it any other way. I want to make clear, these are anti-bias policies that the Mayor and Council were already pursuing, going back before Councilwoman Foster Dublin's and my February 2018 meeting with ACLU People Power, as illustrated by the Inclusive Communities Resolution passed last year, and the work that's been happening for 20 years prior. But it's more urgent now, and we have reached a critical moment in this country where we have to defend our principles at every level of government in order for our communities to take the shape of our ideals. And as we move forward, we need to show our work and be deliberate and transparent when developing and promoting anti-bias policies, or possibly budgeting taxpayer dollars toward addressing this issue. We also need to make clear that we support our police in this effort. It seems unnecessary to point out the immeasurable benefit our police provide for our community, but I think it's really called here now, here. They take resident concerns seriously and want to work toward positive outcomes. I think it's very important to show that any discussion related to equitable practices is done to improve and bolster municipal services, and to make sure that our department has the resources it needs to keep our community safe and protected. In the spirit of the Inclusive Communities Resolution, our aim is for mutual engagement between residents and municipal agencies. If there are segments of the population that are marginalized, it weakens our overall function and efficacy, and it furthers disenfranchisement. We need to make clear that we support our residents in this endeavor, who have shown an effort to spur council into action. This is the essence of community organizing, and we need to embrace it, and we must act if we're going to be a 21st century community leader. And we will act as we've acted so many times before to achieve equitable goals, and partner with our police and other municipal agencies. But again, we need to do a better job talking about race, particularly because so much of what this council does was born out of socioeconomic necessity. Look at, my portfolio is Health and Human Services, and I'll just name off a few boards of what we do. The Human Relations Commission fosters understanding and cross-cultural acceptance. The Food Pantry serves residents who lack access to or lack inadequate, or lack adequate resources for food. The Highland Park Housing Authority provides subsidized access to our wonderful town, ensuring that we are not simply a wealthy enclave. HP Gives a Hoot provides lunch for students in need when school is not in session. The Commission for Universal Access ensures safe access points for residents with limited physical ability. Even the Board of Health, whose statutory charge is to conduct inspections, conducts programmatic initiatives intended to educate residents on myriad public health issues. And as you know, the pursuit of environmental justice is a major hallmark of equitable, inclusive communities. All of these things feature an explicit and implicit racial and socioeconomic component, and we should not be afraid to look at all of our municipal functions through, not through a racial lens, but through a lens of equity. That's how we win. That's how we all win, but we just have to be honest about what we're dealing with. Related, tomorrow, Mayor Brill Middler, Councilwoman Foster Dublin, Borough Administrator Terry Hovair, and I will review two proposals from Elizabeth Williams Riley of the American Conference on Diversity. One proposal is for a series of community workshops that address diversity and inclusion, and the other is for a consultation that will provide us guidance as we develop our policies moving forward. Last night, HP Gives a Hoot held its regular meeting and heard from John Hume, who organizes the Borough's Summer League Basketball Program. Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, Chair of Arts and Recreation, Mayor Brill Middler, and I will meet next week to discuss possible Hoot grant opportunities for this program. Related to Gives a Hoot, do you, or does a family you know need assistance for summer camp costs? HP Gives a Hoot, a municipal fund created by the Borough of Highland Park to contribute to the well-being of our Highland Park children in need, is offering 10 scholarships for K-6 youth for the summer 2018 session at the Highland Park Summer Day Camp. Please email igaveahoot@gmail.com for a copy of the application, or you can pick one up here at the Clerk's Office at Borough Hall 221 South 5th Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey. As housing liaison, I've been fielding several calls related to tenant landlord issues. Please remember that it is illegal to discriminate against persons belonging to any one group based on race, or color, national origin, religion, sex, family status, and disability. And what should you do if you think your fair housing rights have been violated? There is help available. You can reach out to any one of us on council or our Clerk's Office, but housing discrimination complaints can also be filed by phone or in writing with the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, and/or with the New Jersey Division of Civil Rights. You can file an online complaint at the HUD website, which is too long to recite here, but their website is www.hud.gov, and if you enter "housing discrimination" into the search bar, you should be able to find what you need. You can also contact our local HUD office at 800-496-4294. You may file a complaint with the New Jersey Division on Civil Rights within 180 days of the date of the alleged violation. The complaint must be filed at any one of New Jersey's regional offices, also available on the website. Last week, our Board of Health met, where we called and left a voicemail for the winner of the Highland Park Board of Health's Fitbit Challenge. Participants contributed to our public health survey at Sunday Street Fair, and the winner was randomly chosen at our meeting. Also, the Board of Health will be hosting two mosquito trap workshops here in council chambers next Thursday, May 24th, and Wednesday, May 30th. Both workshops will take place at 7:00 PM. Please come. We will have two experts educating residents on how to use the traps and to answer questions, and we will have 24 free traps to distribute, so first come, first served. On Friday, June 1st, at 9:30 AM, please join the Mayor and Council, and the Human Relations Commission, and the Pride Center of New Jersey for our annual Pride Month flag raising. We'll raise the flag out in front of the Senior Youth Center at 220 South 6th Avenue. Finally, thank you to members of our Board of Health, our Commission on Immigrant and Refugee Affairs, and our Human Relations Commission for having tables at our Street Fair. And that's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council President, do you have a...
Council President, do you have a report?
I do, Mayor. First, I'd like to note that tonight on our agenda, on the Consent Agenda Number Fifteen, very important, very large milestone in moving forward with our sustainability program, a step towards, uh, instituting a microgrid. We are, will be, um, approving the submission of the closure, uh, plan and post-closure plan for the Meadows, based, as you've known, in the last month or so, with the assistance of the new, um, Murphy Administration, the mayor, the township administrator, um, that we have finally broken the logjam of getting the site approved and closed under the, um, what they call Legacy Landfill Program. Um, this will allow us to move forward significantly with the actual planning and implementation the way it was originally planned. It is a major step. I'm look, very excited about it. Um, and I'm, and P S E and G as well is very excited about moving forward. Some, on a more mundane level, um, at D, uh, D P W in cooperation with STACK is working on, um, the running problem that you hear about every week from the, uh, the Emerald Ash Bor- Borer Plan, which unfortunately is a significant, uh, natural disaster that we're, uh, undergoing in the most slow motion way. The Emerald Ash Borer destroys all ash trees, and there is basically no known treatment other than a rather expensive chemis- chemical treatment that has to go on for twenty-five years. And basically, it's resulting in most municipalities planning to remove their ash trees, uh, so that they don't eventually die off and create a significant public safety hazard. Um, but STACK with its, um, G I S mapping, that was done under a grant, uh, to identify and mark all the borough trees, uh, and D P W working with a plan, uh, to start the removal plan, uh, this year. Um, we, I've also reached out to the county on several occasions and waited for a response to a, a general thought that Councilman Fine and I have actually shared a bit. To recycle in place, uh, one of the biggest expenses is, is re, is carting the, um, large, large chips away to be disposed of. We have to pay a transportation and a tipping fee, and then the chips are sold by the commercial disposals back to Home Depot and, 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 uh, all the garden centers, so, but we've, I, I've come up with a possible plan, uh, in conjunction with the, our Meadows Trail volunteers to recycle in place, and we hopefully will be able to move to a shared services agreement for the coming year on that. Um, I'd like to, uh, we talked about planting on the street, Councilwoman Welcomeitz, but we'll also be planting down at the Native Plant Preserve and working on some cleanup down there over the weekend, so anybody who wants to volunteer, um, uh, down at the Native Plant Preserve or the Meadows Trail this weekend, they'll be starting around nine o'clock for about two hours. Right now, STACK had some extra stock of verba- of verba- verburnum, which is a pollinator, um, and we decided rather than lose them, uh, we will be planting them at sites around the Environmental Center. They are a, a native, native plant, um, will provide pollination for the, um, uh, for our borough beehives. Sustainable Highland Park is, has developed their questionnaire. It should be rolling out very shortly as part of their grant program and part of their ongoing interest in re, plastic bag reduction. Um, there is a closure questionnaire, uh, shorter form than last time, with the opening questionnaire, to close out the program, uh, and discuss a number of issu- uh, number of issues or plans going forward, um, that the, the borough can do. Um, in addition, um, they're moving forward with, uh, this year's planning, uh, and even with a middle school group who attends the meetings, with regard to other forms of plastic reductions such as microplastics and water, which themes in with this year's pl- uh, theme, which is water. Um, and, um, uh, the two are very bright, they're very precocious. They just need not to dominate all of the meeting, but we're doing very well. Um, and sharing programs back and forth. They are actually sharing what's going on in the middle school, uh, which ties right in with the programs. Uh, as I said, STACK is working with, uh, uh, D P W to develop their plan. Um, in addition, though, they're finalizing, uh, some new sections to their, uh, revised five-year plan. They're working with our arborist, who has developed most of the plan, um, that was discussed at the last two meetings at length, uh, to include some, some new particular programs with regard to, um, additional, uh, planning. And, um, I believe that's all I have. I, I want to make one comment to follow up on Councilman Hirsch's discussion about the letter. Um, I think that they, and even more so based upon an experience I had this weekend, uh, on vacation, that we all need to look at our inherent biases and prejudices, because they're there, and we all need to learn how to use them, recognize them, um, deal with them as they are, and move forward as a society in general. Waving a magic wand at one particular group will not solve the problem. So here I am, on a vacation, in an upmarket hotel, very historic, inches from the Delaware River, having a cocktail, and there's a building for sale that we've, down the street with some shops that we thought might be interesting, uh, to get the flyer on and see if it's worth buying, or at least looking into, maybe get some partners. So I'm elected, of course, because it's raining, to walk off at Portico and go down and get the sales flyer. Uh, the sales flyer was approximately one minute up the street and one minute down the street. We are sitting under a banner, because this town is well-known as one of the pride centers, um, of the state of New Jersey. We're sitting under the Pride Month Celebration Banner, uh, in front of the railing decorations for the Pride Five K, uh, that we had actually cheered the morning before while we were walking out to get our coffee. And as I'm walking away, my, my wife, whom most people know as former Councilwoman Timmons, um, and is African-American, uh, the people sitting next door to us, whom we had offered to move our table to accommodate them since there was more than one little two-top would accommodate, um, started, we're talking about something you would think is the most innocuous thing in the world, of the upcoming royal wedding. And the comment was, and I found this particularly offensive, I fortunately wasn't there, so that Chief Risco didn't have to call the Lambeauville Police to get me out of jail, was the comment about, "How could he do that? It muddies the races." So, it's not just any one particular segment, and it's not an old leftover thing that was cured with the Human Relation Ri- Rights Committee report. It is ongoing, and we all need to look forward to that, and we all need to prevent it. Fortunately, the institution we were at recognized the problem immediately, uh, removed my spouse, gave her seating inside, uh, and waited outside for me to call. Um, and that was a kind of response that I thought recognized the significant problem, and the other patrons left immediately. But let us keep in mind, uh, it may be two thousand eighteen, um, but society in general needs a little reinvention, especially because some of these inherent biases and prejudices, and they're different, they're not the same, um, can be, uh, inspired, shall we say, by, uh, the current top leadership and some of the things that are going around. So let us all keep that in mind. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
Uh, just a little quick, um, one of my little topics I like to keep bringing up because I'm excited as it moves forward. We received our reports from the energy audits in all of our borough buildings, so don't ask me if I've actually read those reports yet, because they just descended on my inbox this week, but we have very detailed reports where they've looked at the energy consumption, and where some of the opportunities for tightening that up are. So I'm looking forward to exploring that and what the options are for, for moving that forward, and saving us both money and, um, saving the world's unnecessary loss of energy. So, uh, more to come.
That's good. Uh, Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Mayor.
Okay. I have a couple of things. Um, first, just to, to add to what Council President George mentioned about the solar field, um, it's a very exciting project for us. Not only will it, um, bring some, um, revenue into the municipality because P S E and G is going to be renting the field, um, but it will be the first research solar field in the state of New Jersey that will be collecting information on how bringing solar energy into batteries and then to the grid actually affects the grid. So it's, it's a very exciting project, and I can't wait to, to actually see those panels there. I, I personally have solar panels on my house now, and, um, I have to tell you, it, it's a pleasure to watch, um, how much energy my panels are generating, and I can't wait to see my first P S E and G bill and how much less it should be. Um, uh, in the newspapers today, we learned that thanks to some of the fine police work that was done by our detectives and police officers in combination with the Prosecutor's Office, um, the, um, person that was a former firefighter that, um, had been, um, behaving inappropriately with young children, um, in Highland Park and surrounding communities, received a very steep sentence in the courts today. So again, thank you, uh, Chief Risco, Lieutenant Abrams, and the entire police department for all your work on that, um, when it was going on here. Um, I do want to also give a plug to my new mayor's teen advisory council. We have a fantastic group of seven high schoolers that have been meeting with me on a monthly basis. Um, they have some, um, things that they want to address to help us in town, um, and one of the first things they've asked is to meet with the, um, people putting together the teen center. Um, so I've invited, uh, Councilwoman Foster Dublin and Lee, um, our employee, Leanne Cosley Richardson, um, to meet with them. I think Elsie, you're tied up, but, you know, Leanne can, can, can meet with them to, to address some of their issues. Finally, I too want to comment on, uh, the situation that has been taking up a great deal of, uh, our, uh, thoughts and plans moving forward, um, that has been addressed by Councilman Hirsch and a bit by C- Council President Phil George. Um, I, and I have to say that serving you as, as your mayor is one of the most rewarding experiences for me. It can be the best volunteer in the wor- job in the world, especially in a town like Highland Park, where you can really make a difference. We are all neighbors. You've heard me say that before. We have common goals, and right now, one of those common goals is to ensure a high level of quality of life for all our residents. I know there's racism in the world we live in, and it's my responsibility to ensure that Highland Park does its best to not perpetuate racial and ethnic biases on our streets. Over the last few weeks, I've been receiving a good deal of input regarding our police department and the evaluation of the STOP data that we collect. You should all know that Chief Risco and all of the management of the police department have been asking for help and welcome the help in analyzing the data that they collect. And as far as I know, we are the only municipality in Middlesex County, and maybe the state, that actually collects this data, because it is important to us. Last week, we had a very productive meeting with the N double A C P. They are providing guidance and sources to us in this data collection. A copy of their letter to us about this is available on the table in front of me. You should also know that I have appointed Councilman Matt Hirsch and Councilwoman Elsie Foster Dublin, representing our Human Relations and Public Safety Council liaisons, to spearhead the governing body's efforts here. Our first steps will include hiring an outside unbiased consultant to analyze the data that is collected by the police department. We're looking at two of the organizations recommended by the N double A C P, and the Ca- and Councilwoman Foster Dublin has already reached out to them. The analysis of the data will lead us to a recommendation for the type of training that will be required. Any funding required for this new training will be made available in the coming year, if it is not already in, available in this year's budget. And this is just a continuation of a series of, um, training for, for sensitivity to different ethnicities that live here in Highland Park and surrounding communities, so that, uh, it will be a continuation of what the police have already been looking for, but this time geared specifically if, uh, to, uh, racial bias training, depending on what the results are by, uh, by the people who'd collect the data for us. Councilman Matt Hirsch and the Human Relations Commission are working on a parallel line in providing training for the borough and also for residents. He has already reached out to Elizabeth Riley Williams of the American Conference on Diversity for proposals to provide additional guidance. This will be training to help all residents in the community and any member of the governing body or bur- or employees. The mayor and council received a letter from People Power that outlined the concerns expressed by some of our residents, including suggested next steps. Councilman Hirsch shared it on Facebook in an effort to be transparent. It outlined some of the steps the governing body has already taken since our last meeting with the N double A C P. I urge those of you who sign the letter to work with us. Reach out to me or any of your borough council members whenever you have questions or concerns. I am in my office at the Borough Hall every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. I work from home on Mondays and Fridays. My door and my cellphone are always open or on. If you prefer not to come to my office, feel free to call me on my cellphone. That number is seven three two three three six zero zero three zero. We aren't a big city, but together we can make a big change. We all live within this one point seven six square miles. If we work together, we can accomplish so much more. That's what I love about our community. Work with us. Thank you. Clerk, would you report on advertising the ward of... Oh, I'm sorry, yes, public discussion. Is there anyone who has something that, please speak into the microphone, and you can lower it or take it off?
How's this? Can you hear me? Yes.
Try again.
Okay. All right, hello. Uh, my name is Ellen Rosner. I live at two forty-two South Sixth Avenue. Um, I'm here looking for some information, and this is not the only place I'm reaching out to. Um, so I live in the Senior Center, and I've spent fifty years as an activist fighting for the rights of others, and I'm now fighting for my own rights as a poor person, as an elder, and as a resident of the Croneman Center. I'm finding it very difficult to get information, so, uh, perhaps I can get some answers here. I'd like to know if there is some body, an independent body, that, uh, can answer for residents' complaints when the complaints have gone up the chain and have not been dealt with satisfactorily? And I don't know if, once I move into this building, I have given up all my rights as a citizen, and my life is totally dependent on the arbitrary, uh, outpourings of the entrenched bureaucracy there. So, um, the other question I have is, I'd like to know, what is the relationship between the city and the building? Because it's a HUD building, it's a federal building, but if there's a police matter in the building, the city police come. If there's a fire or a false alarm, the city fire department comes. So I don't really know what is the relationship, uh, between the city and the building, and, um, really, I'd like to know what sources are available. If there is not an independent body, then I think there should be one. Um, I'm not willing to depend on the manager... I'm not willing to depend on the management of the building. So, ask my questions. Thanks.
Okay. Councilman Hirsch, did you want to address that?
Hi, Ms. Rosner.
Hi.
My name's Matt Hirsch.
Yes, I know.
I'm the liaison to the Highland Park Housing Authority, which actually owns the Cronman Building. Have you, I mean, have you been going to the meetings on the second Wednesdays of every month, the Housing Authority meetings?
Yes, I went to one about a year ago. You were there?
Right.
I tried to contact you since and was unable. Maybe I had the wrong email.
Okay, I can, maybe we can talk after the meeting, and we can go over some of the things that you have concerns about?
I'm really unable to stay any later in the meeting, but I could email you about setting up a meeting. I'd love to sit down with you, if you're willing, and since this is your area, and talk about this.
I'll give you my card before you leave.
Yes, great, okay.
All right, thank you.
All right.
And I would just encourage you to attend the Housing Authority meetings, because the board is composed of residents, including a tenant commissioner as well, Mr. Methvin, so he can be your advocate as well with any concerns that you might have. But I've known Rooney and Donna to be very receptive, but obviously, I want to hear about your concerns and see if we can try to resolve them.
Okay. I'll come get your card then.
I'll come to you. I'll give. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, would you report on advertising the water and sewer ordinance amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 3, 28, Sewer and Water, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication are in file. The ordinance was posted and made available, but public inspection is required by law.
Okay. May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Any public hearing? May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Mayor, I would move this along with the next few. It's a very important step that we need to take care of. Having had a septic backup recently, where Jose was kind enough to jet the Johnson Street, I actually got, which most people don't, and I doubt anybody here did, go down into a manhole that was built over 100 years ago and is made of brick. We really need to modernize. I vote to, I move to bring the ordinance forward.
Any second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call?
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, would you report on advertising the ordinance to provide for a surcharge for metered water usage for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance providing for a surcharge for metered water usage, calendar year 2017, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication are in file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay. May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Any public hearing? May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohan?
I have a comment. While I support the set forth borough budget and bringing the water and sewer rates current, as one of the newest council members, I cannot support a water and sewer surcharge to our residents of an estimated six-year deficit in our water and sewer account. I'd just like to thank Borough Administrator Terry Hovere for bringing this issue to the mayor and council's attention. No.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Clerk, would you report on advertising Resolution 418-122, amendments to the 2018 municipal budget and water and sewer budget?
The 2018 Highland Park municipal budget was introduced and approved on first reading on March 20, 2018. The public hearing was held on April 17, 2018. The budget was amended on April 24 and was duly advertised in the Home News Tribune on April 27.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the amendment on final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any public hearing? All right. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the reso-
No, I have to read it.
Oh.
Sorry.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead. The clerk needs to read the amendment.
Amendment and then the adopted one.
Okay.
Whereas the local municipal budget for the year 2018 was approved on the 20th of March, whereas the public hearing on said budget has been held as advertised, and whereas it is desired to amend said approved budget dependent on approval from the Division of Local Government Services. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and Borough Council of the Borough of Highland Park that the following amendments to the approved budget of 2018 be made. Current fund, general revenues, operations within caps. The first number I'm reading is from, the second number is to. Police salary and wages, $3,410,893. Other expenses, $195,549.20. Total operations, including contingent within caps. I'm sorry, total operations, item 8A within caps, $11,49,965.50. Total operations, including contingent within caps, $11,66,750.56. Details salary and wages, $6,667,518.24. Other expenses, $4,399,232.32. Deferred charges and statutory expenditures, municipal within caps, deficit water and sewer utility operations, current year, from zero, $86,067. Total deferred charges and statutory expenditures, municipal within caps, $1,591,936.13. Total general appropriations for municipal purposes within caps, $12,658,686.69. General appropriations, total deferred charges, municipal deficit water and sewer utility current year, $86,067. Total deferred charges, municipal excluded from caps, $86,067. Total general appropriations for municipal purposes, excluded from caps, $2,769,793.1. Total general appropriations excluded from caps, $2,769,793.1. Be further resolved that two certified copies of this resolution be filed with the Division of Local Government Services for certification of the 2018 budget so amended.
And now, now, may I have a motion to or adopt or reject the resolution to amend the 2018 municipal and water and sewer budget?
Motion to adopt.
So moved.
Roll call?
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes. Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt the items number?
You're not done.
Why?
Because we have to approve, that was the amendment, now we have to approve the budget. I'm sorry. You think I like reading all this?
Okay.
Be resolved by the mayor and Borough Council of the Borough of Highland Park that the budget here and set forth is hereby adopted and shall constitute an appropriation for the purposes stated of the sums therein, set forth as appropriations and authorization of the amount of $12,121,710.84 for municipal purposes. Forty, $448,713.63 for minimum library tax. Summary of revenues, general revenues, surplus anticipated $800,000. Miscellaneous revenues anticipated $2,258,055.23. Amounts to be raised by taxation for municipal purposes, $12,121,710.84. Amount to be raised by taxation, minimum library tax, $448,713.63. Total revenues, $15,628,479.70. Summary of appropriations, general appropriations within caps, operations including contingent, Deferred charges and statutory expenditures, municipal, $1,678,313. Excluded from caps, operations, total operations excluded from caps, $1,144,845.1. Capital improvements, $233,334. Municipal debt service, $1,305,547. Deferred charges, municipal, $200,000, no, sorry, wrong number, zero. Reserve for uncollected taxes, $200,000. Total appropriations, $15,628,479.70. Is hereby certified that the within budget is a true copy of the budget to be finally adopted by resolution of the governing body. Is further certified that each item of revenue and appropriation is set forth in the same amount and by the same title, appeared in the calendar year 2018 approved budget, and all amendments thereto have been previously approved by the Director of the Division of Local Government Services.
Okay. Now, may I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution to adopt the 2018 municipal and water and sewer budget as amended on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Now, roll call?
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt items number on the consent agenda, items number 14 to, is it 24?
Yes.
Okay, so items number 14 through 24 on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
I'd just like to point out one thing with number 15, which is what Councilman George mentioned. We've been working on this for several years. When I was still on Public Works and Terry was Chair of our Sustainable Highland Park, we were able to find this opportunity, and it was actually more of a grant, but, and then I left Public Works, and I want to thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council President George, and thank you Borough Administrator Hovere for working on this for so long to clean up the mess, because we didn't expect this, but thank you for just pulling it through. This is great. And it's a wonderful use of underutilized space that's been sitting there dormant for, what, 50 years? And plus, we're getting rental monies every year, and it's likely going to strengthen the grid down in that area that has the most apartments per capita, I think, that we have in the borough. So this is a big step. So thank you, and yes.
I am appointing Rudolfo Giuliano to the Community Emergency Response Team. May I have a motion to confirm?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Any public discussion? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn to conference?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.